Order the September meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. Order the meeting of the Manning, Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board for September. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings of this life that we enjoy, including our ability to meet in peace here tonight. We call upon you to guide us, provide this board with the wisdom and understanding so that we may make decisions and recommendations that will best serve the current and future citizens of Morrisville. We also ask that you protect our armed forces and first responders throughout the world. Father, guide us better to serve you, our neighbors, and our nation. These things we ask in your name. Have you had an opportunity to, I'm jumping ahead of myself here, any changes to the agenda, Courtney?
No, sir.
From your side? Any changes from our side? Being none, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
A motion to adopt the agenda.
Have a second for that?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Have you all had a chance to review the minutes from the August the 9th meeting? Any changes or corrections?
No.
I look for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll so move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes from August the 9th are approved. Thank you. Come now to a section in our agenda which is public address, and I see some folks have signed up to address us publicly. Please come to the podium if you'd like to speak. Yes.
Oh.
I'm sorry?
She said that he is actually here to talk about one of the items on the agenda, not public address.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. I misunderstood. Thank you. So, anybody wishes to speak in general in public address? Being none, we'll move on. Nothing under all business. So Natalie, finally you get your chance. Item number nine, new business with public comment.
This is a quick question. Are you able to hear us? I mean, I'm noticing this-
Yeah, before I start, are your mics on?
Yes. But it's not working. So I didn't know if we needed to speak louder for Mari, or, okay.
Speaker issue, I think.
Do you want me to wait, or just keep going? Okay. So I have two items on the agenda for you. Both are pretty straightforward. They're cleanup zoning map amendments. The first one is for a parcel which is commonly known as Zero Northwest Carey Parkway. It is located north of Northwest Carey Parkway, the intersection of Northwest Carey Parkway and Chapel Hill Road. As you can see on the map, this was previously Melton Ridge Drive when it was closed. The roadway was closed. It wasn't assigned zoning. So, planning staff is proposing to zone this parcel to Corridor Commercial, which is what you can see that is surrounding it. This you see, the red zoning district. Pretty small parcel, .18 acres. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning map. It is, it will align with the surrounding zoning, which is Corridor Commercial in the area. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it will allow for continuity within the zoning map. So for this item, 2018-308-0, there are two action items for you. A resolution for the adoption of a planned consistency review statement, as well as an ordinance approving the zoning map amendment. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Natalie?
Who owns that, that street that's being rezoned now? Is that us, or DOT, or?
No, actually, the person who owns the parcel that, that strip center, I think it's to the south of that, owns that parcel, and they were notified of this kind of cleanup rezoning.
Any other questions for Natalie?
The same thing I was going to ask.
And what's the current zoning, Natalie?
The current zoning? It does not have an assigned zoning.
The trick question.
Yeah.
That's kind of interesting.
So it's not a rezoning, it's just a zoning.
So, do we have any public comment? Anybody wishes to speak on this item?
I think they're here for the other one, perhaps.
Okay, all right. So we'll close-
They're here for this one?
Close the public comment session. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll do it. Go ahead, Rob.
Okay. Cheat sheet. As required by General Statute 160A 383, I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution 2018-308-0 to the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of plan, of a planned consistency review statement for a zoning map amendment for property commonly known as Zero Northwest Carey Parkway, located north of the intersection of Northwest Carey Parkway and Chapel Hill Road to the Corridor Commercial zoning district, Res 18-06, based on the following. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in public interest because of the proposed amendment supports the following policy in the town's adopted land use plan. Policy 1A, promote growth and development that contributes to and builds upon the town's overall image as a well-planned, attractive, livable, and unique community in the Triangle Region.
Okay, Rob, do I have a second for that motion? Second? Any discussion in the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Natalie. Item 9B.
Do we still have to do?
The ordinance.
So I'll do, I'll finish up here. I hereby move to recommend approval of ordinance 2018-308-0 to the Morrisville Town Council approving a zoning map amendment for property commonly known as Zero Northwest Carey Parkway and located north of the intersection of Northwest Carey Parkway and Chapel Hill Road to the Corridor Commercial zoning district, Res 18-06.
Do I have a second for that motion? Motion and a second. Any discussion? Or for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cared unanimously. Thank you. Now we're ready.
Okay. That brings us to the second item. Again, this is another cleanup amendment to the zoning map. This property is for recently closed segments of Carolina Street and Sears Drive. So that's located in the vicinity of Town Hall Drive and Jeremiah Street, and that's in the town center. It's comprised of four different Wake County pins. As you can see, when these parcels, or portions of the parcels were, were closed as the roadways, they were not assigned zoning district. So, planning staff is proposing that they be zoned Main Street, the MS zoning district, which surrounds it on all four sides, currently does not have zoning. It's vacant, and it's about .53 acres. This is the site of the new town center and where the roundabout and the library will go. Staff is recommending approval of this. It's consistent with the Main Street zoning that surrounds it. Having the entirety of the future town center development in the same zoning district, it's preferable, it's, it will have, it will be continuous with the zoning map. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it will ensure that the project of the Morrisville Community Library will go forward smoothly. So, there are, again, two action items for you for 2018-307-0. The first is a resolution for the adoption of a planned consistency review statement, and the second is the ordinance approving the zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions immediately for Natalie? If not, we'll move to public comment session. Anybody wishes to speak on this item? Please go ahead.
Thank you, sir. See, I'm a new person, so I don't know much about what is happening around. Only thing is, I have a property which is on the Skoggins Drive, so I'm trying to understand what is the impact of this on my property on that, because that is, it says that you are converting to MS. I don't know what is that MS. So I'm sorry for that, but then, this is where I'm trying to understand, is it that we are opening that Carolina Street directly onto the other street, Town Hall, or we're just closing that? I think that's not clear in any of these requests. What are we doing with that street? That's my question, basically.
Well, Mr. Guera, we don't normally have a sort of a backwards and forwards here, but what I'm going to do is ask Natalie to explain that in a little while.
Do you want to put your name and address with the record?
I gave that-
No, I knew, but I mean, um-
Okay. So my name is Kamal Guera, and I live on 744 Morrisville, ah, sorry, Newstead Way, in the Morrisville itself, and this is my other property, which I'm trying to think of my retirement property. That's why I took it that way. So I don't know what we are going to do with that.
Thank you, Mr. Guera. Yes, please.
To answer some of your questions, and I think maybe Michelle will be able to help me a little bit, what might be confusing is that this particular rezoning isn't changing anything about the road or anything like that. This is just a cleanup rezoning that, once that road was closed, a portion wasn't zoned, so we're redoing it, or, you know, assigning it a zoning district. So, when that roadway was closed, we had to assign it. So this is just cleaning up our zoning map. But as far as the background history of what's happening in this area, I think maybe Michelle could help explain a little bit about that? Maybe?
So as Natalie indicated, the property that's highlighted in red, those roads were already closed. That occurred a few months ago. Town council approved that. So the, those roads have been closed, and now we're just assigning the zoning to go along with it. I think you also asked about Carolina Street and kind of what the plans for the area are. I don't know if you could point to it on the map with your cursor, Natalie, but Carolina Street is planned to extend to Town Hall Drive. That right-of-way has actually already been dedicated. It's difficulty on the map, but it's there, and the road is now, the construction has begun, so it's going to connect into Town Hall Drive, and there'll be a roundabout there where the two streets intersect.
I guess we could, yeah. I saw that the road is being constructed, and then this map doesn't show that there's what's going on there. So I was wondering, is it like, oh, it's going to close there, or they're going to complete that? Thanks for letting me know about that. Complete that, right, that Town Hall Drive.
Yeah, it's a little difficult to see on this map. This is just our current zoning map, but those, that project is still moving forward.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Guera, and, and I recommend, if you need more details, our planning staff are really good, so call sometime and they'll, they'll tell you all the plans.
We are hearing you, buddy.
Okay. I recommend, if you need more details, call on our planning staff. They're really good, and they're very willing to, to explain what's going on in the town. Any discussion, comments, questions for Natalie?
No.
So we need another volunteer then, for a motion?
I'll volunteer. Okay, so zoning mac, zoning map amendment, Carolina Street and Sears Drive. As required by General Statute 160A 383, I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution 2018-307-0 to the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency review statement for a zoning map amendment for a portion of property including recently closed segments of Carolina Street and Sears Drive to the Main Street, MS zoning district, REZ 18-05, based on the following. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in the public interest because the proposed amendment supports the following policies in the town's adopted land use plan. Policy 1A, promote growth and development that contributes to and builds upon the town's overall image as a well-planned, attractive, livable, and unique community in the Triangle Region. Policy 1C, plan development support, vibrant, walkable gathering places at Morrisville's historic crossroads. Policy 2A, promote development that fosters a sense of place by improving the character of the built environment, including visually appealing, visually appealing buildings, streetscapes, amenities, and public spaces, as well as initiative 2D from the strategic plan, Develop Town Core.
Thank you, Harvey. Do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
Motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
I hereby move to recommend approval of ordinance 2018-307-0 to the Morrisville Town Council approving a zoning map amendment for a portion of property including recently closed segments of Carolina Street and Sears Drive to the Main Street, MS zoning district, REZ 18-05.
I have a second for that motion. Motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Natalie. Jump to item 11.
Good evening. Just a couple items, and to kind of bring you up to speed on where we are within some of the development projects for the town. We did receive two new applications this month. One is for Phase Two of the Wake Tech campus, and the other is for a greenway that will connect Parkside Elementary to Willingham. That is being constructed, and plans to be constructed kind of concurrently with the work that's taking place out there as well. And then we did have two approvals. One was the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center. That project was approved, and has gone out to bid as well. And then the site plan and construction plan for the historic Christian Church parking lot expansion, which will allow expanded use of the existing facility, the town restored, to take place since there'll be adequate parking associated with any events that are held there.
We don't have to run across the street.
You do not have to run across the street-
That's always been kind of a-
And a kind of leap across some, uh-
In the culvert.
Yeah. And I'm not saying that through experience or anything, you know. A couple of other items of note. The land use and zoning map for a portion of Carrington Mill Boulevard, and again, that was related, another map cleanup. Those were approved by council in August. And the rezoning case, 301 and 305 Aviation Parkway, the applicant actually withdrew that case. There's a variety of reasons, but due to some conditions that they proposed, staff was no longer able to support the conditional rezoning, and that played, most likely played a part in their reasoning to withdraw their application.
And which one was that for?
Was that the, yeah. Was that the banquet hall?
Yes, that was the banquet hall site. As it evolved, they removed the banquet hall as a use, and what really read staff to change their recommendations was when they removed all food-related uses. And it really, at the end of the day, little small strip projects are successful in Morrisville when they have a food element to them, and we felt that it could create, or impact the economic viability of the project, and potentially then impact tax base as well. And so we did recommend denial. And the first public hearing on the draft, Public Transportation Plan, that took place. There's going to be a series of hearings on the item. There's also a work session that will be held next week in addition to the second public hearing. Don't have a planned adoption date. We do not have any planned date to close the, you know, public comment process. As well, if you want to look at the up-to-date comments, they're available in the agenda packet. That will be published probably later tonight or tomorrow morning. So if you wanted to take a look at any new comments, they are available through the agenda packet.
What's the cutoff before the meeting, as far as how, how far back they go, or when they stop?
So, we really wrap up all of our packets on Wednesday mornings before they're then sent to council, so 7:00 AM.
So the day before? So the day before?
No, so 7:00 AM the Wednesday, prior to the Tuesday.
So it's basically a week, almost, okay.
Mm-hmm. In that way, it's included in the packets that are typically delivered on Thursday or Friday. So that is our kind of firm cutoff line. It's the same one that pretty much-
I was thinking we had the same thing. I just, I had a lot of people who had commented to me that they had made comments about various things on there that didn't seem to have been reflected based upon some of the comments that others had made, so-
Yes.
I just, that's kind of what I thought had happened, so.
And we are continuing to see three major themes. Millicent, Crabtree Crossing, and the third one, which is now escaping, but there is a third one that tends to be the hot topic. Well, Millicent's one of them, then Crabtree Crossing is the other. I, the third one's just completely escaping me at this moment. We are getting a new group of comments that say road extension, no road extension, but unfortunately, they're not providing what road they're referring to. So we're categorizing, categorizing those as inter-general, so that way we're not making any assumptions just because you live at this address, you're taking a position on that particular topic. So if you know of anybody that has entered comments, you know, remind them that that's probably a very important piece of information to include, you know, so that way we know when they say yes to the road or no to the road, we know which road they're referring to. Again, the work session is on Tuesday. It is up into the public. Anybody's welcome to attend and hear. We're going to start really drilling into both Crabtree and Millicent. That is the plan. And give a little bit of history, what changed, you know, involved over the planned time on those two particular items. And then we'll provide some additional information in response to some of the comments, and different positions and different changes that occurred over time, just to make sure that council's getting, you know, some factual information in addition to the comments that are being provided. And I'm certainly not saying those are not factual comments. Just, for example, is, you know, staff, you know, only recommended to remove green, you know, start, to recommend the connection, you know, Clement's Green Connection, and really, staff provided multiple options for this board to consider. We also provided multiple options for all the other extensions, and really provided some of the pros and cons of the different options. So we're just going to make sure that council has all of that, so they understand what information we were provided, when new recommended changes occur to the plan, which were then, you know, added. So that's going to be a little bit of the context of the information that we're providing. And that was really kind of the last item. I know y'all are aware that you participated in the community to mind envisioning exercise. As a reminder, we send this to council as well, so they can, they're able to keep up to speed of different activities that are taking place as well. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I also just want to report that apparently there is some software updates today to the system, and that's what's prohibiting us. So my apologies to the audience that you can't hear anybody up on the dais, or anybody down on, on the floor. Apparently, there's a glitch with the software update that removed our ability to adjust those volumes. It is perfectly fine online, so if you didn't hear something, you can go back and look at the video online, or the audio, and it's 100% clear on there. So it's picking up there, it's just not appropriately heading through the speakers here at our ceiling. So my apologies for anybody that had difficulty hearing.
Of course.
Again, any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions on any of those items?
No.
I have one quick one. I've heard so many different things about what's happening with the Aquatics and Fitness Center. I've heard that the swimming pool is moving, that they're busting out a wall so we'll have more classroom space, the, the weight room will go downstairs. I've heard all sorts of things, and I was just wondering, what is actually happening?
So I will tell you my understanding based off the exterior reviews that we do. We don't necessarily get into the details of the interior, per se, but yes, the pool in its current location is being removed. There will no longer be a bubble. The tennis courts in their current location are also being removed. If I look directly facing the building, the current front door that you have today, the driveway that's located behind you, that is being relocated, heading up closer to Park West on the other side of the site, there's a blind turn there, a blind kind of curve, and so if people are speeding, honestly, if you're going 30, it's, you know, 40, it's very difficult to see the person. So we and people are taking an illegal left there, so it is being shifted to create a safer in-and-out movement at the site. There are also, if you've visited, you know, there's a lot of dirt turning out there that's part of the Stormwater Rest, I mean, the, right, Permian Buffer Restoration Project that we're working on. So that's just kind of another element, but different. But if you look to the building, as I was saying, to your left is where the new pool will be located. It looks like primarily a 100% glass enclosure, but it's actually not glass. It's a different type of material, and it can be opened and closed. There's going to be some outdoor areas, so they can roll up doors, and you can go out and sunbathe, you know, during the summer, and then they can shut during the winter. There's actually two pools on the interior. They have a lap pool, as well as a kiddie pool slash instructional pool. They're technically connected on the one system, but they'll be a little divided, so that way you can have swim lessons while children are still playing in kind of the kiddie pool area. Between the pool and the building, where the new locker rooms will be built, they will be destroying all the old ones, and my understanding is where the current ones are today is where the weight room is going to go. That's my understanding, but I haven't seen that detailed level of the plan yet. But they are shutting down the facility, you know, in its entirety. It's really for the safety of everybody on the site, and it, the project timeline for construction actually shrinks when you're not having to do it in phase while people are still using the facility. Parks and Recs is actually being relocated onto, into the Southport area. There are going to be leasing space there, so all the employees will have a place to work. As part of that, any employees that are located at the Parks and Rec building here are also being relocated. So all of Parks and Rec is going to the new facility over there. There's some benefits to that location. One, it has ample parking, it's easy to find, it's not that terribly far from here. And the others, there's actually a fair amount of storage, because it's a flex building, so some of the storage, the needs that they're going to have can be addressed at the same time while the facility shuts down.
Thank you.
Tennis courts going back in?
They are returning two of the three courts, and they're going to be behind kind of where the pool is located now. That was all the space that was really available.
Thank you, Courtney. Any other questions, Courtney? Okay. Item 12. Planning and zoning board comments.
No comment.
Catherine?
I will, I know I've been dancing around this for several months, but I am not going to be in October's meeting. I will send you, Courtney and Peter, I will send you both email to that, and I will look at the packet. I'll be out of town, you know, after surgery, but I will look at the packet, and if I have any questions, I'll call ahead of time. If I have any comments, I'll make sure and send them to you.
Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate that. I have a question for you, Courtney. Some of us remember the police building.
Yes, it was the police building.
Which apparently wasn't good enough for the police, and was the Parks and Rec building. What's going to happen to that?
I don't know who's moving in there yet, so I don't have an answer.
The police, maybe, no?
You know, as far as I know, planning's not moving. We just redid our entrance, and it's really nice-
Oh, it's nice.
If you haven't visited it. So, planning inspections. We just, we're growing, and there's no place for people, is really what it's boiling down to, so it's trying to get, make sure departments stay together, and kind of shifting them around. For example, the assistant town manager used to be in the same building where planning's located, just a different suite. He's now located in this building. You know, Rodney, which, Rodney obviously, many of you know as GIS, he's actually not sitting in the planning department anymore. We joke, he's in his private annex currently, which allows him to actually focus on GIS, you know, and not, and must be hogtied by current planning, which I think was probably what was happening. But that then allows us to make space for yet another person who's moving into our planning department that will be starting later this month. We have another planner too starting. So we ended up shifting some people around just within where we sit to create a space for Natalie, and to create a space for our new planner, Chris Lawson. So there's a lot of that that is taking place currently. Fire administration, minus the fire chief, is- We have another planner too starting. So we ended up shifting some people around just within where we sit to create a space for Natalie and to create a space for our new planner, Chris Lawson. So there's a lot of that that is taking place currently. Fire administration minus the fire chief is located, really it's fire prevention, I should say, is located with planning and inspections. They are now moving basically to the area where it was vacated by Todd. So there's now more seats and they're kind of shifting back over there. And that really created space for me to hire our new planner. Because we were down, we were down of space. So there's been lots of shifting and reorganization to make sure that everybody has a decent environment to work in and really is, you know, located together.
Sounds very positive and it sounds worse than Wake County School reassignment.
You know, here you get a dolly and you just slide to a different parking lot in a building. It's not that difficult.
I have one more question for you, which is a little bit unfair off the top of your head. But more than a year ago, we were told that the end of McCrimmon Parkway was going to be canceled or not canceled, but, but closed. And it could be as soon as August of last year. Any ideas what's, what's happening?
I will have the town engineer email you information on that.
Sounds good.
I'm still taking bets as to whether Phase Two gets finished first.
And I'm going to remain silent and I will have the town engineer send a status update to the board.
That would be, that would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome, Sanjay.
Thank you. Sorry to be late.
Hey, we're on item 12 already, so do you have any-
Oh, wonderful. I expect you to be fast, but not that fast.
Now's your opportunity for planning and zoning board comments. If you have none, that's fine.
I will, no. That's it. No comments.
All right. Well, I just want to welcome Natalie again and thank you. We gave you a pretty easy time this time, so. I mean, we'll give you a Park West Village or a Crabtree Crossing extension next time. Any other comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll move that we adjourn.
I have a second for that motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.